I now reconvene the special meeting of the Board of Education at 5:00 PM. With Cervantes, Cruz, and Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Patricia?
The board met in closed session from 4:30 PM to 4:42 PM regarding conference with legal counsel of existing litigation one case. By a vote of four zero, approved participation in an amicus brief to be filed with the U.S. Supreme Court in the cases Little v. Hickox and West Virginia v. B. PJ, addressing questions under Title IX related to fairness and inclusion in girls athletics.
And for the record, there is no cost to the district. Thank you, Patricia. Ms. Palmer, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you for being here.
Can I hand over your heart? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and on board. We are now at public comments. Patty Cake, how many requests to speak?
Eleven.
Thank you.
Twelve.
Twelve? That gives each speaker three minutes. Board bylaw nine three two three, meeting conduct establishes the guidelines and the following process applies. Speakers will be called in the order you registered on the electronic request to speak device. Names are displayed on monitors. Please watch for your name to appear and line up in the designated numbers behind the mic. Once the recording secretary announces the first name, requests to speak will no longer be accepted. Mr. Cruz, please explain the public comment guidelines.
You have three minutes to address the board. You cannot donate your time. One person at the mic at a time. If you read on behalf of an absent person, that will be considered your time. Begin comments when the clock starts. Please refer to Board Policy thirteen twelve point one for the procedure regarding complaints against an employee. And lastly, speakers may not approach the daisies anytime. The board is in session. Please give any materials you wish distributed to the board through the recording secretary.
Natalie Cooney?
I'm here to speak as the Chair of Equity and Human Rights Committee for Associated Chino Teachers. I want to remind the board that your responsibility in appointing a vice president is to ensure all our students, families, and staff have a representative who will support them, ensure that they have the resources to thrive. Your role is not to appoint someone who will marginalize a very community in our schools are meant to serve. The interview questions posed for this appointment do just that. They single out LGBTQ students and educators, creating a hostile, unsafe environment. Let me remind you, when you banned pride flags and removed legally protected safe space cards, a judge ruled your actions as unlawful. We won that case, and we will continue to stand up for what's right. Educators show up every day for our students. We advocate for them. We support their families, and we do so without a political or personal agenda. Meanwhile, this board seems to be focused on gaining political notoriety rather than improving our schools. So let's ask some real questions. How do these interview questions improve classroom conditions? How do they support special education students? How does obsessing over trans athletes help us get tissues during flu season? Or more than two expo markers per year? My department is being relocated mid-year to another portable. We've been told permanent classroom could be five to ten years away. Where is the urgency to fix real problems? Some of our departments are being denied meaningful professional development, with some educators not attending conferences in over a decade. The average teacher spends a thousand dollars out of pocket every year. I personally pay for EdPuzzle, Bookly, and Quizlet, and when I asked for reimbursement from a district, a district personnel told me to skip a week's worth of coffee. Would you expect a UPS driver to buy their own shipping labels? Or a surgeon to order their IV bags off Amazon? That's what you're asking of us. These questions aren't about selecting the best leader. They're about identifying who will follow orders and turn a blind eye while you chase your five minutes of fame. Teachers, we will not back down. While you try to tell LGBTQ students they aren't welcome, we are here to tell them that they are fearfully and wonderfully made. We see you. We support you. We will keep fighting for equality, dignity, and the future of our students deserve. And let me be clear, supporting LGBTQ students does not mean we are not supporting female students and athletes. They are not mutually exclusive. Stop weaponizing our girls to promote your anti-LGBTQ agenda and your hate. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Frank Edgerdean III. I've been a community member here for almost thirty-five years. And within those thirty-five years, I've been loved, protected, and embraced by this community. Recently, I haven't seen that within this community. I've seen this community rip each other apart. I've seen this community follow each other home. I've seen this community harass each other at gas stations and grocery carts. That is not the community that I grew up in. That is not the community that I want to leave a legacy for my children. But it's not all your fault. A lot of the blame goes to the board here, who have told you that your neighbors are your enemies. Your neighbors have never been your enemies. We should be embracing each other. Let's not forget that just few months ago, Sonya Shaw was protecting a child predator. And during this time, she wrote legislation and policy that said, or that scratched out bullying and sexual harassment. That doesn't protect children. That protects her friends. People on the board that would call themselves their friends, who didn't dissent, who didn't speak out when this was happening. These are the people that are on board, and this is what these nominations are on now. You all operate out of fear for what would happen when the bully of the pulpit would talk about you, for dissent. These nominations are about who is not going to dissent and who is going to operate in fear. I have never operated in fear. Never in my life have I. I have operated out of love and out of commitment to my community. So I'm asking my community members now to no longer operate out of fear, but instead operate out of commitment to your community. So as of November twenty twenty-six, when you reach for the ballot, do not reach for the ballot because you are afraid. Do not reach for the ballot because a bully at a pulpit told you to vote or how to vote. Reach for the ballot because your community needs saving, because your community needs to come together. That's what we are about, and that's what we are here for.
Address the board.
That's okay. So November twenty twenty-six, make sure that you vote. Make sure that you vote for your hearts. To the board members, make sure that you understand that you have a commitment to this Do not commit yourself to a bully at a pulpit. Do not operate out of fear because of the president here. Vote. Vote in November twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Tom McAfee?
Before the timer starts, you guys need to start lining up on the circles. As soon as he's done, the timer will start. Start, I like it. Will start, um, he'll start to push the timer once that happens. So we just don't want you to lose time.
Got it. Ready? All right. Good evening. My wife Margot got her first horse about twelve years ago, and her second four years ago. For the last ten years, we've been looking in different cities and states for a place where we can have our horses on site, with no luck. About two weeks ago, a place came up in a nearby city. We agreed that if we didn't get this one, we'd put our search, our search on hold at least until after your selection tonight, and indefinitely if I was selected. This past Thursday, the offer was accepted. We did our inspection on Saturday, and they're moving forward, so I'm withdrawing my application as of now, because I don't want you to be in the same place sometime soon. As you move forward, I would like to give, give you a things, a few things to ponder and a suggestion. Early last week, while I was praying and thinking of the board position, I read a commentary on Acts. Here, the author reminds us, "The rulers of this world stamp their will on their subjects by bullying and violence. Jesus wins the victory through the power of self-giving love." Second, keep in mind, John Bunyan, the writer of the Christian classic Pilgrim's Progress, was twice jailed by the Christian government. Third, the church needs to be allied to both the left and the right, pointing to Jesus. Anytime the church beds with the state or a particular party, the church becomes a prostitute. Fourth, please remember the parable of the good Samaritan. In Matthew, Jesus reminds us of the two great, greatest commandments on which all the law and prophets depend. They are to love God and love our neighbors. Sorry, I'm shaken. In the parable of the good Samaritan in Luke, Jesus tells us, "Those we dislike or even consider our enemies are our neighbors." Who is your Samaritan? Mine is probably the guy wearing the baga hat. Is yours a Democrat? Illegal person? An LGBT person? These people we are to love, even when we disagree with them. Passing resolutions against them is not the way to show love or lead them to Jesus. As a principal in this district, I always tried to hire somebody different than me as my assistant principal, someone whose strengths were different, who had different ideas and points of view. In doing so, they helped me to grow as a leader and a person, and I hope I did the same for them. My suggestion is to pick someone different than you, perhaps even a Samaritan, a person with whom you and I probably would have great differences of opinion. In doing so, perhaps you all would grow as leaders and people. Finally, I will continue to pray for the board, district, and your church, that Jesus will lead you to be more like Him in both word and action. Thank you.
Danielle Moulman?
Enfield and members of the board, I come to you today as an alumni of this district, an employee, an employee of CDUSD, and a parent to a future student. Two years ago, I moved back to Chino Hills to be closer to my family and to raise my son in the community that raised me. Instead of that community, I found myself in the middle of the biggest joke in California public education. I know where this board stands, how they've pushed their hateful rhetoric into every nook and cranny of this district's governance, but Dr. Enfield, you should be ashamed. You signed off on the thirteen questions we're about to hear, questions that conveniently neglect to mention issues of education or experience, questions that amplify an agenda of homophobia and transphobia. Dr. Enfield, when you approve these questions, did you think about your queer students, students you swore to protect? Did you think about your queer employees like me, employees who come to work every day as public servants, not for the pay, but because we want to provide a safe space for students to learn and grow? You have the opportunity, Dr. Enfield, to do something good, something truly good for this district. You can swear in a board member who will fight for Chino Valley students and educators, who will proudly represent the community against the circus that this school board has become. Thank you.
Kristy Hurst?
Good evening. I have some questions, which I'm sure will be answered, since I've heard it said numerous times, this is a completely transparent process. So, for the sake of transparency, who actually wrote these questions? Questions that have nothing to do with actually running a school district. The answer to this question has varied each time I see it. According to the minutes of your August fifth special meeting, the board, quote, "selected Sonya Shaw and John Cervantes to serve as a committee of less than a quorum of the board to work with the superintendent or designated staff." Sonya told the Chino champion, quote, "Policy questions were developed by a committee made up of qualified, duly-elected members and approved by the board in its entirety." I emailed Dr. Enfield twice, asking who actually was on the committee who decided these questions, and was finally told, quote, "On August fifth, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Education selected Mrs. Shaw and Mr. Cervantes to oversee the process. Mrs. Shaw and Mr. Cervantes brought the questions forward to the Board of Education for approval." So what happened to the designated staff? Did the board not follow the process you voted on publicly? Which statement is true? If staff did help, this community deserves to know who works in education and thought these were valid questions. In the name of transparency, this community should be aware that candidate Shawn Smith is the husband of one of Sonya's best friends, Jenny Lynn Pineda Smith. If you follow Sonya online, you will see Jenny travels all over the state with her. I wonder if they discussed these very questions together during their many hours in the car. Also, for transparency, I think we can note the character of the candidate's wife and ask how he feels about her online behavior. Here is one of the hundreds of comments she has made to me or about me on my social media posts, and this is not a one-off, this is her common behavior. Quote, "Just a friendly advice, sometimes you just need a good F." Watch how beautiful your IG post after that. You just really need to loosen up. You just really...
I'm not attacking her. I'm reading exactly what she said, and since you have removed our right, since you have removed our right... I'm sorry, cut the mic for a second so I can explain. Since you have removed our right to vote and have a say in this, the board, the community deserves... You get it for your time, you're out. Out. You remove yourself. We're calling a five-minute break. You remove yourself. You remove yourself for disrupting the meeting. Escort yourself out, and I will explain to what's happening. We, remove yourself. Remove yourself. If you keep interrupting, then you're going to be removed too. You, yes, you are. Remove yourself. You do, but you're attacking a community member that has nothing to do with this. Exactly. Jenny is not on the agenda. It has to be an item on the agenda. You're not going to attack community members that are not on the agenda. Keep going, and you're going to escort yourself out. You want to redirect your questions to what's on the agenda? That is a warning, number one. Number two, you're going to escort yourself out. Warning, escort yourself out. You're done. You're done. We're not going to continue until you're done. We're, we're having a five-minute break. The room needs to be escorted out entirely, and we'll let you back in when everybody's ready. Five-minute break, the room is going...
I now reconvene the Board of Education meeting at 5:32 PM.
Crystal B.
Alright, good evening Board. So tonight you are filling the seat of John Monroe. A man in our community, um, that, my man that our community chose because he stood, stood firm on parental rights and for protecting girls' sports and locker rooms. Those values mattered to the voters and they mattered tonight. The majority of this community supported John because of his convictions and that's why it's frustrating to hear some dismiss the very questions that reflect what our families care about the most. Chino Valley chose John Monroe and each one of you because you are willing to stand for what's right. We see your efforts and we stand with you and we are counting on you to appoint someone who will keep putting kids first and continue this fight alongside you guys. And let's be clear, these are, these are legal and policy questions. The Board already received cover letters and resumes to review qualifications. But the real qualifications under Ed Code 35201 are straightforward, which are being 18, not a felon and so on. Everything else is subjective. So what you are asking tonight are clear policy questions and policy is exactly what this Board is elected to do. If Sacramento hadn't pushed all of this down our schools throats, the questions before you would look very different. Those in opposition to these very questions you've presented, presented are reacting to a fight they themselves started. They only have themselves to blame. Thank you.
Misty S.
Good evening. Our schools are the very foundation of our community and the values we teach our children shape the future. That's why it is so important that our school board stands united in its beliefs. When leadership is divided, students and teachers are the ones who suffer from inconsistent direction and confusing priorities. We need Board members who share a clear vision focused on academics, excellence and preparing our kids for real world success. Introducing divisive ideologies only distracts from the basics, reading, writing, math and science. Our children deserve classrooms free from political agendas where parents can trust that education is about knowledge, not ideology. That is what this Board is trying to do. The people complaining that the interview questions are all political are the ones that don't get it. The Board is asking these questions to know who is going to help them keep the politics out, to keep the unwanted ideologies out. There shouldn't be anyone in this community that doesn't want their kids to excel. A strong, united school board ensures stability, consistency and the best future for our students. And let's be clear, classrooms work best when they focus on what unites us, not what divides us. Kids excel when the fo- focus is on the foundations, not what gender they are, not what proteins, pronouns they use, what flag is being flown, what inappropriate books are being read, who is not supposed to be in their bathrooms or locker rooms or what obnoxious hair color a teacher has or political statement a teacher is trying to make with their outfit. Education should bring our students together around shared goals, achievement, responsibility and respect. When we keep the focus on skills and knowledge, every child needs to succeed. We build stronger students, stronger families and a stronger community. So I'm grateful the Board is asking these very appropriate questions because united we stand, divided we fall. Thank you.
Lauren Daniel.
Hello, my name is Lauren and last school year I was a substitute teacher in this district primarily long, primarily long-term at a junior high school. Since my mom, a former ELA teacher, took an early retirement last year, I taught her class of nearly 175 eighth graders for a total of five months. This was a big job to take on and while it posed to be challenging at times, um, it was probably the most rewarding experience of my life thus far. I have forever been told by my mom that it is not always the test scores in common core curriculum that are the most important, but rather the connections that you build with your students. I witnessed this myself. Each day I welcome my students into class and it became even more apparent when I would notice usually attentive students sometimes being emotionally checked out during some of my lessons. I would never take their disinterest personally, but I would take it as an opportunity to get to know the student better. I have many stories of students sharing their personal struggles with me, whether it was regarding their parents divorce, their gender identity or sexual orientation, or that they realized they were gay and were scared that their religious parents would kill them if they found out. You, all of you on the Board are so disconnected from the students you are working, supposed to be working for, not against, and this is because all of you prioritize the promotion of your Christian beliefs and the furtherance of your political agendas. All of you bow down to Jack Hibbs and that's why some of the country's most evil faces of conservative Christianity, including Sonia who left the diocese, will be at the Calvary Chapel in October. While I know the Board wants to throw another party boasting their five to zero victory, you should seriously reconsider appointing someone who will not follow Sonia like a sheep, but instead challenge yourselves to actually listen to a candidate with a different opinion. Thank you very much.
Hey guys, I'm here as Mama Shaw right now, the momma bear in Chino Valley that's been productive, protect, protective um, on making sure our kids have a great, great future and a great, great education. Chino is great and it has been great ever since we took over this Board with people who focus on education because we have experts, we have great teachers here that just want to do their work despite Sacramento's attack. The Board sets policies. These questions cut straight to the heart of the matter. Qualifications are already settled under Education Code 35107. The real test now, does the next Board member have the guts to lead and even answer these questions? Apparently someone's trying to protect somebody because they're going up in arms with these questions and that's bizarre. These are questions that are, that have to do with policy. Policy is the Board's job. Anyone whining that they're illegal or inappropriate, take it up with Sacramento. Because only the weak crying right now, you seem to be a groomer and we don't need groomers up on that Board. So I'm glad that you are actually asking these questions so we filter out the groomers from actually governing our Board. Let it be clear, do you want to keep interrupting and you want to, you want a position on here, girl? Let it be clear, Sacramento is on full mission attacking parental rights. Sneaking sexually explicit education and books, they call it education, but it's indoctrination into schools and forcing gender ideology into our kids classroom. If you don't believe me, look at the legislation, look at the training that they put our good teachers through. It's all about ideologies. It's crap, it's trash, it belongs in Sacramento with these politicians and down the garbage can. You know what? Our community stood firm with the five zero Board majority doing the right thing and that's why we'll continue to demand that leaders who actually stand with parents, not bureaucrats in Sacramento. Our district is fiscally responsible and I hope it stays that way as a mom here. Education focused, that's exactly what Chino Valley is. We're leading the way here in California. And keeping ideologies out of the classroom, any union activists trying to push it in, they're being exposed and people are shutting it down and I'm so glad you have a Board majority to do, support that. Letting teachers teach is what we do. And with the five zero, currently a four zero because one of our members moved out of the state, clearly we need to make sure whoever fills this seat does a darn good job like our brother Monroe. The community is sending a loud, a loud message with the members that are up here. Two elections, you guys endured a lot, okay? Recalls, death threats, people approaching the diocese. I'm so glad you stand strong for our community. It's laughable and frankly sad how some keep attacking a Board that's doing exactly what the voters keep electing them to do. The ones that are afraid to answer these questions, grow a backbone. You're disgruntled and you're a wannabe politician. Board, do the right job and get somebody in there so we can continue to do, do the good work and lead in California.
David Bollock.
Governing Board Members, President Shaw. This weekend I was talking about how under President Shaw's leadership, this Board was the first to pioneer a parental notification policy after the State Assembly Education Chair refused to even have hearings on the proposed legislation to notify parents of a child request to make a change of identification in school records. After the challenges of the court and the legislator, you perfected this policy to where it not only complies but conforms to federal FERPA law and state law, making sure a parent knows what's going on with us in school with their child. A policy that is ready for any school Board in California that is immune to any challenges in our court. I know this is old news to this Board. But I bring this up because today you have the daunting task of interviewing a replacement for a vacant school seat. I would encourage you when choosing this candidate that you remember the reasons why each you ran and the accomplishments, accomplishments you have made as a unified school Board. While it may be tempting to appoint somebody with diverging viewpoints, opposite of your own, to not re, to not risk becoming an echo chamber, you must remember why voters voted you in and the outgoing Board member. It is important to honor the will of the voters in this situation by not straying off course to fulfill the mission you promised voters when running for these seats. To honor the wishes of those who voted for the Board member who just resigned and continue on with a Board that values the students' well-being first by preserving and strengthening the bonds with their parents through policies that you have implemented. Remember all the other goals you have made by improving education, creating better relationships with your staff while still maintaining the goal of protecting your students, especially the most vulnerable members. Our young female students from an agenda to erase them and compromise their safety. An evil agenda that is coming from the highest positions of government in California. You do this while taking harsh words from a small majority, minority of this district who doesn't own the harms of that evil agenda. Remember Boards, those are just words. They are meaningless, especially when they are not truthful. I encourage you to replace the outgoing Board member with a candidate that reflects the value of this Board. Thank you.
Oscar.
Good evening Board. Um, so I want to thank you for all your hard work. I know it's not easy. Um, you get a lot of pushback, you know? And what it is, the reason why you get so much pushback is because, because they're not used to seeing a Board stand up for, for, for children and parents. You know, they, they think that, that, that being on the children's side is letting teachers or letting adults keep secrets with kids, you know? Um, you had many people come up here, you had four educators, four teachers come up here and all four of them mentioned sexual something at one point or the other, you know? And, and I know part of your questions is protecting kids from that, protecting kids from this material, from, from books, you know, from boys and girls locker rooms, you know? And this is, this is why we, we need these questions because, because you had four teachers come up here and they all brought up some kind of, some kind of sexual stuff, you know? And they're all upset, you know, they're all upset because, uh, I call them groomers, right? You know, and, and, uh, the reason why I do that is because any, any person, uh, I'll give you, I got a few examples, right? Uh, 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 no, uh, not, if, if the shoe fits where it, right? Uh, number one, if you want boys and girls restrooms, you're a groomer. If you want secrets from parents, in my opinion, you're a groomer. If, if you want sexual flags, real flags in classrooms, you're a groomer. If you allow, if you think it's okay to have sexual, uh, uh, written X books in classrooms as educational books uh, for some kind of a social experiment, you're a groomer, you know? And me as a father of four daughters through the district, you know, um, I believe that before you go educate children, you gotta protect them. So it's like President, the President gotta protect the Board, right? Gotta, gotta have a safe country, in order for the country to grow, right? Same thing in school. We gotta have a safe school, we gotta have safe, safe children in, in order to be educated. So unless you have the kids that are safe, unless the kids feel they're safe and they're not being harassed, you know, you know, they're not being exposed to some kind of perversion, they can't learn. So, so number one is, is, uh, is having them safe, having them secure and then we educate them. You know, of course we want, we want better schools, you know, better teachers and all that, that's important. But first comes first, it's having the kids safe. As a father, when my daughter went to school, I want to make sure that she never be exposed to some kind of boy in the locker room. That's for me as first because if she does get that, she might be in trauma, she might be in shock for this for her life. So I want to make sure that my kids are safe whenever they leave my home. Thank you so much for, for holding it down, for being strong. God bless and we're praying for you.
Damon Trentis.
Good evening, School Board. Mr. Cruz, Servanas, Einfield, Shaw and Na. Feel like you are really not regarding the pa, the voice of the students with these questions. Cause I saw them and I wondered, why is there so much stuff on gay people? I just don't think that, I feel like you guys need to regard the students' voice as well. Furthermore, I feel like I've been up here multiple times during No Deception. I hope you remember the student, the student organizing that happened right over there. And we've barely got any representation on this Board other than the preferential vote of the appointed, of the appointed student representative. And I feel like, no, it, I don't feel like, it is a fact that there are so many people talking about this sexual stuff because you guys have set the tone for that with No Deception, Parental Notification. Furthermore, I feel like you also haven't been listening to the voices and not rehiring Ayala Girls Water Puddle Coach.
I'm sorry, we're gonna have to keep it to the actual questions, so Coach has nothing to do with this.
Okay, I understand. So... So policy should be the Board's job, yet I feel like I don't see any questions that suggest policy that would really, that would, that stuff, uh, sorry, I just don't understand why it's all on one thing when you should be regarding the well-being of the students. You should be listening, you should be listening to the teachers. And you said that one who refuses these answers are political, but all these questions are made to be political. So I genuinely feel like I don't understand that. I just feel like the questions could have been better. I hope you guys do regard the students' voice when you appoint this new Board member. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. We are now on to action items. That's item 2A1. Recommend the Board of Education interview qualified candidates for trustee area number four. And A, make a provisional appointment for trustee area number four pursuant, pursuant to Education Code 5091 effective immediately and administer the oath of office. B, elect a vice president and C, designate a Board representative to the following vacant committees and commissions. Number one, liaison to the Chino Valley Independent Fire District. Number two, representative to the Chino Hills Parks and Recreation Commission. And number three, alternate to the Baldi View Regional Occupational Program. First, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to express our sincere appreciation to each of the candidates for your willingness to serve our community and participate in tonight's public interview process. If appointed, you will join a team of passionate educators and dedicated staff who have helped to make this district one of the highest performing unified school districts in California and one of the most fiscally responsible even in the face of economic challenges. As we begin, we encourage each of you to take a deep breath, stay calm and be yourselves. We're here to get to know you as individuals, so speak from the heart and let your passion for serving the community come through. So now I'll provide a brief overview on how the evening will proceed. We will be interviewing, we had a couple withdraw, we have Macacy and Schwadeski withdraw, so that leaves us at... And we had a couple prior. Ms. Kayla, we have four? Five? Five. Okay, we have five left. Macacy and Schrodewski, they withdrew. So we will be actually interviewing five candidates. The order of interviews will be determined by a random name draw. Each candidate has up to 30 minutes to respond to a set of prepared questions which have been placed in front of you at your seat for your convenience. Time is projected on the monitors for candidates. When the candidate begins to speak, the digital clock will start. It will be your responsibility to self pace your time. Please note that some of the questions. Are yes or no, what is it? You don't have a clock?
No.
So how are you gonna keep him?
I will keep it here.
Okay, Dr. Enfield is keeping time there, so there's actually no time that you will see displayed. There is no need to elaborate beyond yes or no for the yes or no questions. We will ask all candidates to remain with us after their interview. If you are selected for the provisional appointment, you will be administered the oath of office and will immediately take your seat at the dais as a board member, as a member of the board. With that, let's begin. May I have a motion? Yes, thank you, Mr. Na, and a second by Mr. Cervantes. Patricia, would you please draw the first name? Sean Smith. And Dr. Enfield will raise his hand with five fingers for five minutes left. Do we want to put one of these on there? Thank you, Mr. Smith, for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Are we ready? Timer ready. Okay, we will start once you actually start answering the questions. Number one, if a boy or a male says he wants to play on a girl's sports team, federal Title IX protections say no, but California law says yes. Lawsuits are currently in play. As a trustee, which side would you stand on and why?
The former, Title IX. I believe that boys have unfair advantage in sports.
Thank you. Should biological boys be allowed to use the girls' restroom, locker rooms, or showers and vice versa, yes or no?
No.
Thank you. Number three, Chino Valley Unified is renowned for its academic excellence due to its excellent teachers and support staff and direction given by the board to focus on academics. What is your position on allowing various flags and symbols that are not part of the curriculum to be displayed in the classroom such as personal, political, or ideological flags?
I agree. You do have excellent teachers and support staff. I believe that good teachers would prefer to stick to the curriculum and refrain from espousing their personal, political, or ideological beliefs, whether that be through alteration of the curriculum or symbolic displays. And I would agree with this sentiment.
Thank you. Number four, what is your position on allowing students under the age of 18 to request changes to their official or unofficial school records without parental knowledge, such as a request to be identified as a different sex at school and why?
I do not believe students under the age of 18 should be able to request changes to their official or unofficial school records without parental knowledge. The reason for this is, kind of answered in the next question, is I believe parents have the ultimate authority over their child's education and upbringing.
Thank you. I actually still have to ask you, number five. Do you believe parents have the ultimate authority over their child's education and upbringing? Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Should schools ever keep information about a child's mental health, identity, or behavior from parents?
No.
Thank you. Scenario, there is an excerpt from a book in front of you. The following passages from a book currently available in some high school libraries across America and has been challenged by parents for sexually explicit content. One scene shows an illustrated depiction of oral sex in a dream sequence. Another is one of masturbation while imagining a same-sex encounter. The author has explained these scenes are about understanding personal sexuality and identity. Now here's my question, do you believe these sexually explicit books should be accessible to students in a public school library? Actually, let me read some from a couple other books. I don't want to just single out that book because there's a couple books. One is The Bluest Eye. I'm gonna read some, this is in libraries all across California. I believe this was actually in some of our libraries prior to this board taking seat. The Bluest Eye, again, page 85. "Might wonder again, for six hundred time, what is it, what it would be like to have that feeling while her husband's penis is inside her. The closest thing to it was the time she was walking down the street with her napkin that slipped free from her sanitary belt. It moved gently between her legs as she walked, gently over so gently, and then a slight, distinctly delicious sensation collected in her crotch. As the delight grew, she had to stop in the streets, hold her thighs together and contain it. That must be like, be what it's like when she thinks, but it never happens while it's inside her. When he withdraws, she pulls her nightgown down, slips out of the bed and into the bathroom with relief." That's one page, I mean, there's tons of pages in this book. I'm just gonna save you guys the agony, but here's some more, page 162. So people who want to grab the book, go ahead, go to page 162 and continuing on 163. "The confused mixture of his memories of Pauline and doing of a wild and forbidden thing excited him, and the bolt of desire ran down his genitals, giving in length and softening of his lip and his anus, surrounding all that, this lust with a border of politeness. He wanted to, and the F-word." I mean, I can go on, "His tenderly, but tenderness would not hold. The tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down to his guts and fly out into her." Do I need to continue or can I go on to the next book? Because I'm pretty sure everybody gets the idea of how explicit these books are, but for some odd reason, getting rid of them, you know, is a problem. Identical, another book, check. It's in libraries all across California, this is no lie. And I'm actually gonna have Mr. Cruz read it because I'm sick to my stomach and I want to throw up just from reading the one before. Sorry, Mr. Cruz, put your mic on, you're gonna read this for me.
She tried to sit up, but daddy, daddy, I want to teach you something new. He lifted her nightgown, rolled it up over her belly, coaxed her. I can't read this. Sorry, I can't read it.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think I've seen enough.
You get the point?
Yeah, I get the point.
Okay, and I'll be fair, I'll read all the passages up to the point where I couldn't read it and Mr. Cruz can read it and we'll show you the passages. I'll put them on my social media if you want to follow along so that way you can see what we're getting rid of out of the classrooms. Now with that said, number seven, do you believe that sexually explicit books, like the ones I showed you, should be accessible to students in public school library? Why or why not?
No, I don't believe they should be accessible. Anyone can do a simple search of the effects of sexually explicit material on a child's mind and you will find not only no benefit, but a detriment to the child's mental development.
Thank you. "In recent years, state education departments, including California, have mandated professional development for teachers that include training on certain social and cultural ideologies, compelling teachers to participate in training rooted in specific ideological framework that infringe on personal, religious, or philosophical beliefs. As a school board member, how would you approach the issue of mandatory ideological training for staff?"
Well, ideological can mean a lot of different things, but in general, and certainly in this context, I don't think there should be any mandatory ideological training for staff.
Thank you. "Should teachers be compelled to participate even if they object? Why or why not?"
Teachers should not be compelled to participate in any training that is outside the standards of providing a quality education outlined by the community.
Thank you. Number 10, community school grants can provide additional funding, but in California, they often come with requirements that could include medical interventions, gender-affirming care, reproductive services for students, programs that many in our community may not support. As a board member, would you vote to reject these grants to protect local control, parental rights, and community standards even if it means turning down extra funding?
Yes.
Thank you. "Teachers' unions in some districts have gone beyond collective bargaining and now are actively pressuring school boards to adopt and enforce ideological policies, often unrelated to academic instruction. In some cases, these unions have even threatened or initiated lawsuits against districts including our own that don't comply with their political agenda. Many in the community feel this undermines local control, academic focus, and taxpayer accountability. Number 11, as a board member, how would you respond to a teachers' union attempting to force ideological priorities onto your district, especially if they back it with threats of legal action?"
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to say that I am a strong supporter of trade unions. I am the product of a trade union. I believe that we have a fantastic, not only talented group of teachers, but amazingly hardworking teachers in our district. I witnessed this firsthand with my four kids, two that are graduated, the two that are still in this district. That being said, I think that the best response to a union's attempt at forcing ideological priorities on our district would be through open and transparent discussion, maybe even public debate. At the end of the day, for a union to remain relevant, the members need to provide a quality service to the customers. And in this case, the customers are the parents of this community.
Thank you. Number 12, do you believe unions have too much influence in public education today when it comes to subject matters not related to instruction?
Yes.
And you can elaborate, that wasn't a yes or no, it's just up to you.
Yes, I believe that.
Okay.
I mean, that's kind of outlined in number 11, that there's a lot of unfortunate ideology being propagated through the teachers' union and that the, before union becomes, there's the word trade typically associated, and that trade needs to be focused on. So I think that it's up to the members of the union to vote within their union to do the right thing.
Thank you. And last one, many feel that California school board, CSBA, often act less like an independent advocate for local school districts and more like a mouthpiece that blindly follows Sacramento's mandates, pushing controversial policies without asking tough questions or pushing back. Number 13, last question, as a board member, how would you ensure your district doesn't just follow the CSBA line blindly, but instead critically evaluate state policies to protect local control and community values?
This is one of those questions that kind of answers itself. I mean, we'll simply have to roll up our sleeves and put some overgraze into critically evaluating these policies as they come in. We'll have to analyze those and see if they're applicable to our district. This board frankly, well, all school boards should, answer to the community and the will of the community shall be done.
And that concludes our questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Laura Wieland?
What name was it, Laura?
Laura.
What was her last name?
Wieland?
Wieland, so we're withdrawing this one? Out, okay.
Lisa Great House.
Wieland. I'm sorry? Yeah, that one's out. Hello, Mrs. Great House, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Number one, if a boy or male says he wants to play on a girl's sports team, federal Title IX protections say no, but California law says yes. Lawsuits are currently in play. As a trustee, which side would you stand on and why?
I realize you were trying to get our personal opinion here, and I respect opinions on both sides of this issue. As a school board trustee, you take an oath to uphold the state constitution. In the rare instance when state and federal laws are at odds, it is up to the judicial branch to make that decision. So until that ruling is made, state law should guide our decision. This board should not be choosing which state laws to obey and which ones to break. And I can't help but wonder why this is your top priority when there has not been a single instance of a transgender student in our district seeking to play on a girl's team? When our district breaks the law, as we've seen time and again, it gets sued and us taxpayers are left holding the bill when we lose. Our district had nearly $1.5 million in legal fees last school year, much higher than most districts our size, partly because you are voting to file frivolous lawsuits and challenging state laws that get us sued. I don't believe in using our hard-earned tax dollars that should be used in classrooms to instead line lawyers' pockets. Fiscal responsibility must be part of the decision-making process and it seems to never factor into your decisions.
Thank you. Number two, should biological boys be allowed to use the girls' restroom, locker rooms, or showers and vice versa? Yes or no?
Again, there are virtually zero cases of this happening in our district and I don't understand your obsession with transgender students. And every time you say biological boys, you are implying that transgender students don't exist. They do exist, and I would urge members of this board to talk with some of these students and you'll understand them a little better and perhaps stop implying that they represent a danger to other students simply because they are transgender. Most students seem to understand this and it's only some adults who seem to be fear mongering. But I would reiterate what I said earlier, I would follow state law on this issue. Fortunately, in California, there is a law requiring K-12 students to provide gender-neutral bathrooms by 2026. So our state has solved this issue for us. It's maddening to me that these culture war questions are at the top of your list, yet questions about actual public education issues about student achievement, special education, school safety, teacher retention and development, declining enrollment and vocational training are nowhere to be found, nor are questions about our qualifications or priorities.
Thank you very much. Number three, Chino Valley Unified is renowned for its academic excellence due to its excellent teachers and support staff and direction given by the board to focus on academics. What is your position on allowing various flags and symbols that are not part of the curriculum to be displayed in classrooms such as personal, political, or ideological flags?
Well, I don't necessarily have an issue with this policy. It was the impetus for it and the way it was implemented that makes it problematic. When this policy was passed in June 2023, it was obvious that it was meant only to keep pride flags out of schools, especially during Pride Month. Rainbows are a symbol of inclusivity for LGBTQ plus students and frankly, it is petty and cruel to force teachers to remove them when the goal is to make all students feel welcome. And once again, it has opened this district up to litigation since this was passed without any input from the teachers' union. Like many of this board's policies, it was reckless to pass this without considering the consequences that will cost our district funds that should be going into the classroom just so you can make sure LGBTQ plus students know that they are not welcome in our schools.
Thank you. Number four, what is your position on allowing students under the age of 18 to request changes to their unofficial or official records without parental knowledge, such as a request to be identified as a different sex at school and why?
First, I should point out that this board's original policy of forcing teachers, employees, and administrators to inform parents to inform parents if there is any sign a child might be transgender was ruled to be discriminatory by a superior court judge and led to yet another costly lawsuit against the district. When the board lost this case, you were forced to pivot and adopt this less intrusive policy that covers any changes to a student's official record. So no, I have no problem with notifying parents when a student requests a change in their record, since the student will be aware that it will trigger a notification.
Thank you. And number five, do you believe that parents have the ultimate authority over their child's education and upbringing, yes or no?
Of course, parents have authority to make major decisions affecting their child's welfare, education, health, and development. But I'm not sure what "ultimate authority" means. How about when a parent abuses their child? Doesn't Child Protective Services have the authority to remove the child from the home? Don't grandparents or guardians sometimes make decisions when parents are unable to? Don't courts sometimes decide to emancipate a child who chooses to leave home before they're 18? So I don't think this question can be properly answered with a yes or no, but again, this board deals only with absolutes and none of the real world's nuances or gray area, and that's one of the problems here.
Thank you. Number six, should schools ever keep information about a child's mental health, identity, or behavior from parents?
Our teachers make tough decisions every day about what, when, and how they should share issues about a student with their parents. I find it offensive that you accuse teachers of keeping information from parents, implying there's a sinister agenda. Instead, every day, teachers make judgment calls about when a student is just having a bad day and when there's something more serious going on. Of course, teachers have responsibility to report if a child appears to be struggling with mental health or behavioral issues. And even though you didn't ask this because it delves into actual education issues, our teachers often share information with parents about potential undiagnosed learning disabilities as well.
Thank you. The following passage that is in front of you is from a book currently available in high school libraries across America and has been challenged by parents for sexually explicit content. One scene shows an illustrated depiction of oral sex in a dream sequence, another depicts masturbation while imagining a same-sex encounter. The author has explained these scenes are about understanding personal sexuality and identity, and I will read to give you the same opportunity. Identical in books all across California. Here's one. She tried to sit up, but daddy pushed her gently back against the mattress. Stay just like that for daddy, I want to teach you something new. He lifted her nightgown, rolled it over her belly, coaxed her, threw her bed legs apart. She squirmed, a paltry protest, "Don't move." Daddy's scarlet face underlined his command. I thought he might smack her, but as quickly as his anger flared, it dissipated smoke. Don't be afraid, this won't hurt, you'll like it, I promise. He kissed the length of her torso down to the small naked V. It was only his mouth that night, he didn't even ask her to touch him, prove how much she loved him. Afterwards, she worried, didn't he want her love anymore? What she had done wrong, and yet he taught her something new, something awful, or something wonderful, something every girl should know the joy of. Though, of course, she shouldn't learn it from daddy. And 10, it isn't exactly easy to separate good touch from bad touch, proper love from improper love, daddy from perv. And from the bluest eye, also in libraries all across California, and from my recollection before this board took the majority in some of ours. Page 85, might wonder again, for the 600th time, what would it be like for that feeling while her husband's penis is inside her? The closest thing it was, the time she was walking down the street with her napkin slip-free from her sanitary belt. It moved gently between her legs as she walked, gently, ever so gently. And then a slight and distinctly delicious sensation collected in her crotch. As a delight grew, she had to stop in the streets, hold her thighs together to contain it, but must be what it's like, she thinks. But it never happens while he is inside her. When he withdraws, she pulls her nightgown down, slips out of the bed and into the bathroom with relief. And we can go on, the confused mixture of the memories of Pauline and them doing wild and forbidden things excited him, and a bolt of desire ran down his genitals, giving it length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding, all of this was just a border of politeness, he wanted to F-word. And just to be fair, do you want to have somebody take her the rest of one, because I don't really want to read it?
That's okay, that's okay.
So we get the point, right?
Yep. If this board is so concerned-
I didn't answer, I didn't ask you the question. Yeah, one second. Number seven. Do you believe these sexually explicit books should be accessible to students in a public school library, why or why not?
First, if this board is so concerned about students being exposed to sexually explicit content, I can tell you as a substitute teacher that you might want to restrict phone use at school instead of banning library books. I am not in favor of book banning in general. Books that tackle tough subjects like sexual abuse and addiction teach our kids about the real world. Our librarians make educated decisions about which books are age-appropriate, worthwhile, and that students will choose to read. And if a parent reports an issue with a library book, there was already a review process in place at our district involving librarians, teachers, and administrators. What I don't agree with is this board's policy to give themselves the ultimate authority to ban books outright after a single complaint, instead of allowing trained librarians who actually have read the material in full. You can't read one passage out of context and decide that no child should be permitted to read a book just because one parent complained. But that's exactly what this board has done, and you are not qualified to do it. As a parent, I wouldn't want one parent's complaint about the color purple, or the bluest eye, or the kite runner, all books that have been banned, to deny all students an opportunity to read them. And I certainly wouldn't want a school board made up of evangelicals with a far-right political agenda to decide what my children could read.
Maybe you didn't hear the question, do you believe the ones that I read, these sexually explicit books should be accessible to students in the public school library? Do you want to answer that, or you want to skip over it?
I believe that I answered that.
Okay, thank you. In the recent years, state education departments, including in California, have mandated professional development for teachers that includes training on certain social and cultural ideologies, compelling teachers to participate in training rooted in specific ideological framework that infringe on personal religious or philosophical beliefs. Number eight. As a school board member, how would you approach the issue of mandatory ideological training for staff?
Every question you are asking us tonight has an obvious ideological slant. So the hypocrisy of asking this question is laughable. Also, the vague way in which this question is phrased, I have no idea what training you're referring to. For argument's sake, I'm going to assume that you're referring to California's PREP program, which provides sexual health education to students ages 10 to 19 with a focus on reaching students who are low-income, experiencing homelessness, in foster care, or identify as LGBTQ plus. The program has been shown to influence youth to delay sexual activity and increase contraceptive use for those who are sexually active. But this board is so intolerant that you would reject anything purely because it refers to the LGBTQ plus population. So for that reason alone, I can understand why you would label this ideological instead of a program that recognizes all students. I am not intimately familiar with the curriculum, so I don't know if I'd have any issues with specific elements. But I can say that I would not have a problem with curriculum just because it includes references to the LGBTQ plus population. This district is in the business of educating students, plain and simple. It is not up to any of us to judge how students or their families choose to live or how they choose to identify. But it is up to this board to create an environment that includes and supports all students, even if the church you represent does not.
Point of information, this church that you're referring to, I don't go there, so please stop referring to the church. Next question.
You say so.
Number nine, should teachers be compelled to participate even if they object, why or why not?
Again, you would have to be more specific about the training you're referring to. But in general, even when a teacher does not agree with something in mandated training or curriculum, as an employee of the district, it is still their responsibility to participate. That is because public school is for all, and teachers and this board must and should recognize, respect, and accommodate differences in students in every respect.
Number 10, community school grants can provide additional funding, but in California, they often come with requirements that could include medical interventions, gender-affirming care, or reproductive services for students. Programs that many in our community may not support. As a board member, would you vote to reject these grants to protect local control, parental rights, and community standards, even if it means turning down extra funding?
I'm glad you asked this even in the leading way that you asked it. Because this board's decision to turn down significant funding from this program is based on wildly inaccurate rumors and a whole lot of disinformation that you continue to spread tonight. Community schools' funding could help so many families in CDUSD with the resources for housing assistance, food, clothing, healthcare, mental health services, the kind of wraparound services that would make a huge difference in the lives of many of our students. Your question implies that there could be strings attached, but I have yet to hear any evidence of that. Only disinformation from this board, again, targeting the LGBTQ plus population. The only credible reports I have heard about community schools' programs in surrounding districts have been extremely positive. So this board has done a huge disservice to this community by turning down these funds. You are so focused on political grandstanding that you have forgotten that your priorities should be on the well-being and education of our students. And frankly, it's shameful.
Thank you. Teachers' union in some districts have gone beyond collective bargaining and are now actively pressuring school boards to adopt and enforce ideological policies. Often unrelated to academic instruction, in some cases, these unions have even threatened or initiated lawsuits against districts, including our own. That don't comply with their political agenda. Many in the community feel this undermines local control, academic focus, and taxpayers' accountability. Number 11, as a board member, how would you respond to a teachers' union attempting to force ideological priorities onto your district, especially if they back it with threats of legal action?
Again, asking this kind of politically-charged, union-bashing question about ideological influence and political agendas is the height of hypocrisy. Given that you have not given a single example of the union's ideological priorities, I have no idea what you're referring to. As a school board member, I would judge any policy or proposal on its merits. So unless you would like to provide an example, it would be disingenuous for me to say one way or another if I would support or reject it.
Thank you. Number 12, do you believe that unions have too much influence in public education today when it comes to subject matters not related to instruction?
Again, I wish you could supply an example of what you're referring to, as I would judge every policy individually based on its merits. In general, though, I support our union and dedicated teachers and staff, and I wish this board would treat them with the respect for their hard work in educating our students instead of continually attacking them and their union.
Thank you. Many feel that the California School Boards Association, CSBA, often act less like an independent advocate for local districts and more like a mouthpiece that blindly follows Sacramento mandates, pushing controversial policies without even asking tough questions or pushing back. Number 13, and last question. As a board member, how would you ensure your district doesn't just follow the CSBA line blindly, but instead critically evaluate state policies to protect local control and community values?
It is the responsibility of every board member to evaluate policies before implementing them, regardless of CSBA's guidelines. But a law is a law, and if I had problems with the state ed code, I would turn to my state legislator or to the State Department of Education. I would not blindly follow anything, ignore, or violate a law just because I didn't like it. That would violate my oath of office, and again, it is what leads to costly lawsuits at the expense of our students. We have a diverse community with many opinions, and may I remind you, Ms. Shaw, that out of about 10,000 votes in your trustee area, you won by only 300. I would not call that an overwhelming mandate, the voters are okay with you using our tax dollars to fight every policy that comes down from Sacramento just because you see it as a stepping stone to higher office and you want to be interviewed on Fox News. Finally, I'd like to say that this board should be ashamed by asking applicants not one question about their qualifications, their priorities for our district, or how they would help improve student achievement. You complain about how ideologies and political agendas are corrupting public education, but every question on your list is basically a litmus test for your own political, ideological, and religious agenda. It's shameful and a huge insult to our community. And to add to that, I've been advised by a school board attorney that many of these questions here tonight violate the Brown Act because you are asking us to disclose how we would vote on issues that come before this board, including the pre-selected person among us who will be sworn in tonight. I'll be interested to hear your defense of that before this meeting is over, since it very well may compromise this entire appointment selection process. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mary Joy Valinsky?
Am I saying Valinsky right? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mary Joy Valinsky.
One second, sorry, there's no introduction, we're just gonna ask you questions.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yes, we got your resume and everything, we're glad, thank you, thank you for being here.
I just wanted to share with the community more, but, okay.
Okay, number one.
Yes.
If a boy or a male says he wants to play on a girl's sports team, federal Title IX protections say no, but California law says yes. Lawsuits are currently in play. As a trustee, which side would you stand on and why?
Okay, well, I feel it is true that physiological advantages of some males could give them an unfair advantage over some females while playing on a girl's sports team. Due to this, I can understand why many feel it shouldn't be allowed. I have a moderate view on the issue.
Thank you. Number two, should biological boys be allowed to use the girls' restrooms, locker rooms, or showers and vice versa, yes or no?
Biological males that identify as females and vice versa should be given facilities that are gender-neutral. This would reduce anxiety for everyone involved. I feel this is a human rights issue. Also, it's very important to realize the level of anxiety that a team would experience using a bathroom that they didn't identify with their gender, so.
Thank you. Number three, Chino Valley Unified is renowned for its academic excellence due to its excellent teachers and support staff and direction given by the board to focus on academics. What is your position on allowing various flags and symbols that are not part of the curriculum to be displayed in classrooms such as personal, political, or ideological flags?
Well, I feel that within public schools, the only flags that should be present in classroom include the United States flag and California's flag. Classroom focus should be on the curriculum, school staff's personal and political ideologies should not be forced on the students.
Thank you very much. Number four, what is your position on allowing students under the age of 18 to request changes to their official or unofficial school records without parental knowledge, such as a request to be identified as a different sex at school and why?
I feel that since we're talking about school records, official and unofficial, it is important to notify parents of the minors' request to make these changes.
Thank you very much. Number five, do you believe parents have the ultimate authority over their child's education and upbringing, yes or no?
Yes, and in the case of parents fulfilling their roles as parents and providing a healthy environment at home, parents should have the ultimate authority. If this isn't the case, though, and there's dangerous or neglectful environment at home involving child abuse, the school staff member will need to remember their oath as a mandated reporter. As a substitute teacher, I've taken that oath many times the last 15 years. This requires the staff member to report child abuse to the appropriate authority.
Thank you so much. Number six, should schools ever keep information about a child's mental health, identity, or behavior from parents, yes or no?
No, schools shouldn't be able to keep critical information about a child's behavior or mental health from parents, especially serious concerns such as severe depression, suicidal behaviors, and bullying. There are many times that a student might be afraid to communicate these feelings to their parents. Therefore, if a staff member is aware, it is important to notify parents. Again, if the staff member finds the parent to be abusive and neglectful, they'll need to report using the AB 1432 mandated reporting.
Thank you. Scenario, the following passage, and I think you have it in front of you, is from a book currently available in high school libraries across America and has been challenged by parents for sexually explicit content. One scene shows an illustrated depiction of oral sex in a dream sequence, another depicts masturbation while imagining a same-sex encounter. The author has explained these scenes are about understanding personal sexuality and identity. I can read these things again, do you want me just to put them in front of you?
No, it's okay.
I think I've read them maybe three or four times. I think I've read them maybe three or four times.
I've heard them. I, I feel no.
Let me just read the question and then I'll let you answer.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Number seven, do you believe these sexually explicit books should be accessible to the students in the public school library, why or why not? There you go.
Uh, no, I don't believe sexually explicit books should be in public school libraries. I wasn't aware of such sexually explicit books in libraries, but I feel that the only books, only education students should be receiving regarding sexual education would be more like health education, of which adolescents are given education on having healthy attitudes towards their growth and development, and that that I know is taught in schools and should continue.
Thank you. In recent years, state education departments, including in California, have mandated professional development for teachers that includes training on certain social and cultural ideologies, compelling teachers to participate in training rooted in specific ideological frameworks that infringe on personal, religious, or philosophical beliefs. Number eight, as a school board member, how would you approach the issue of mandatory ideological training for staff?
Well, I believe having training to understand diversified students would be very necessary. School staff should be trained on how to deal with situations regarding so many different races and religions and gender identifications. So if a heated discussion arises between students, the staff member will be able to carefully manage the situation because it can get probably pretty dramatic, so. And I feel like a lack of training and empathy would also like create lawsuits from parents and people in law, so that's my answer.
Thank you. Should, number nine, should teachers be compelled to participate even if they object, why or why not?
Well, I do feel yes, because they need to be trained to be aware of and handle difficult situations amidst all the diversity. This would help protect the school, the staff, and the district staff in the face of conflict, and again, lawsuits. So, yeah, I do think they should.
Thank you. Number 10, community school grants can provide additional funding, but in California, they often come with requirements that could include medical interventions, gender-affirming care, or reproductive services for students, programs that in many of our communities may not support. As a board member, would you vote to reject these grants to protect local control, parental rights, and community standards even if it means turning down extra funding?
Well, I don't really have the ability to generalize about so many different kinds of grants, however, I do feel that if there are strings attached, that could be very difficult to manage, so I do think that they should be rejected with many strings attached like that, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Teachers' unions in some districts have gone beyond collective bargaining and are now actively pressuring school boards to adopt and enforce ideological policies, often unrelated to academic instruction. In some cases, these unions have even threatened or initiated lawsuits against districts, including our own, that don't comply with their political agenda. Many in our community feel that this undermines local control, academic focus, and taxpayers' accountability. Number 11, as a board member, how would you respond to a teachers' union attempting to force ideological priorities onto your district, especially if they back it with threats of legal action?
My only exposure to unions is, my husband's been in a union for like 30 years, he's a power lineman, but my only experience to unions is that is they're negotiating working conditions and ensuring fair wages. So from my understanding, union bargaining units don't enforce ideological policies, so I'm not able to agree or disagree with this question, I just don't have any awareness of it, so.
Okay. Number 12, do you believe unions have too much influence in public education today when it comes to subject matters not related to instruction?
Again, no, because I, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Many feel that the California School Boards Association, C S B A, often act less like an independent advocate for local districts and more like a mouthpiece that blindly follows Sacramento's mandates, pushing controversial policies without asking tough questions or pushing back. Number 13, as a board member, how would you ensure your district doesn't just follow the C S B A line blindly, but instead critically evaluate state policy to protect local control and community values?
Well, I feel the school board should not follow any policies blindly. I feel like policies always need to be carefully reviewed and evaluated before implementing. This would ensure that everyone would benefit, like you can't just, you know, have a portion of the community benefit off of it, so it definitely needs to be reviewed and not just follow blindly.
Thank you. And that concludes your questions. Thank you very much for joining us today and answering the questions.
You're welcome.
One moment. Would you be able to say your last name, just so I don't say it wrong if I need to say it again? I just don't wanna.
Yeah, sorry, it's one of those difficult Italian names. It's, in English, it's Ingenere, and in Italian, it's Ingenieri.
Okay, I'll try the Ingenere. Thank you. Okay, number one, thank you for joining us, first of all. Number one, if a boy or male says he wants to play on a girl's sports team, federal Title IX protections say no, but California law says yes, lawsuits are currently in play. As a trustee, which side would you stand on and why?
So I would, as a father of four children, one boy and three girls, I can relate to this issue. Three of my children played sports in high school. My son went on to play professional baseball, and my youngest daughter went on to play collegiate softball. And I can tell you that there is a very big physical difference between boys and girls that is, at their peak abilities, is just a significance difference between the two. So it's just not fair to girls to have to compete with boys because they're athletes. Even if you put them on hormone blockers, they're still working out all the time and they're athletes. So I'm against boys playing on girls' sports.
Thank you very much. Number two, should biological boys be allowed to use the girls' restroom, locker rooms, or showers and vice versa, yes or no?
Uh, no, they shouldn't. The girls' locker rooms and girls' showers are a safe space for women to be able to change their clothes and do what they need to do, and there shouldn't be males in there. I don't see it going the other way. I don't see girls going into boy locker rooms, but I would be against that as well.
Thank you very much. Number three, Chino Valley Unified is renowned for its academic excellence due to its excellent teachers and support staff and direction given by the board to focus on academics. What is your position on allowing various flags and symbols that are not part of the curriculum to be displayed in the classroom such as personal, political, or ideological flags?
So I believe that schools should focus on academics, reading, writing, arithmetic, and history, with a balance of the arts and athletics, and anything to do with extracurricular stuff should be out of the, out of the classroom. I don't believe in the pride flags being in there. I also don't think the Trump flag should be in there either. I think you leave all that stuff out, they can go out to outside sources to be able to do all that kind of activity, but in the classroom, I would like to see our kids be focusing and our teachers focusing on academics, that's what they're there for, and that's what our taxpayers, our tax dollars pay for.
Thank you. Number four, what is your position on allowing students under the age of 18 to request changes to their official or unofficial school records without parental knowledge, such as a request to be identified as a different sex at school and why?
I believe that parents should know exactly what's going on with their children. They are legally and ultimately responsible for their child's actions, and there are many activities minors aren't allowed to do until their, until adulthood, and for this reason, they need to reach maturity to be, before they make these types of decisions on their own. I recognize that some parents may not be up to the ability to be a good parent, but I think as a general rule, that parents should always be notified of what's going on with their children.
Thank you. Okay, that's number five. Number five is, do you believe parents have the ultimate authority over their child's education and upbringing, yes or no?
Yes, a parent is every student's first line of authority in their upbringing and including their education.
Thank you. Number six, should schools ever keep information about a child's mental health, identity, or behavior from parents, yes or no?
Emphatically no. Parents are legally responsible for their children, parents must be informed.
Thank you. There's a passage in front of you, and then I've read it over, are you okay with me skipping reading?
Yeah, you've read it in number five.
I appreciate that. The following passage is from a book currently available in high school libraries across America and has been challenged by parents for sexually explicit content. One scene shows illustrated depiction of oral sex in a dream sequence, another depicts masturbation while imagining a same-sex encounter. The author has explained these scenes that are about understanding personal sexuality and identity. Number seven, do you believe these sexually explicit books should be accessible to students in a public school library, why or why not?
The very short answer is no. I don't believe sexual education should be delivered outside of the approved curriculum that teachers are teaching students, especially from a public bookshelf with no context as to what is written or depicted. I'm against banning books, but I think that public libraries are the perfect location for all types of books. I think that as far as a school library is concerned, I think we should be able to limit what is available. And, and the last thing is that, you know, all of this stuff is easily found on the internet, and all these kids know how to use the internet. I mean, you can see penguins and polar bears having sex, so I, I don't know what, you know, why everybody needs to see this in the school library.
Thank you very much. In recent years, state education departments, including in California, have mandated professional development for teachers that include training on certain social and cultural ideologies, compelling teachers to participate in training rooted in specific ideological framework that infringes on personal, religious, or philosophical beliefs. Number eight, as a school board member, how would you approach the issue of mandatory ideological training for staff?
So the issue here is ideology, and so I have two issues. First, taking teachers away from the classroom where we're paying them tax dollars to teach our kids what to do is fundamentally wrong. The first priority should be teaching and not extracurricular stuff unless it has to do specifically in making them a better teacher and a better educator. The second issue is mandating. I have a problem with mandating, especially when it has to do with ideology, because to me, that sounds like Nazism. We shouldn't be telling teachers whether it's right or left, where they should be concentrating their efforts on stuff that isn't necessary for what our kids need to be learning to be good students. I think there should be a code of conduct that must be adhered to per Human Resource Guidelines, but beyond that, teachers should teach.
Thank you. Number nine, should teachers be compelled to participate even if they object, why or why not?
Absolutely not. Again, we should be compelling our teachers to do something, we should not be compelling our teachers to do something that they may have a political, religious, or moral issue against, and again, from the left or the right.
Thank you. Number 10, community school grants can provide additional funding, but in California, they often come with requirements that include, that include medical interventions, gender-affirming care, reproductive services for students, programs that many in our community may not support. As a board member, would you vote to reject these grants to protect local control, parental rights, and community standards even if it means turning down extra funding?
Um, yes, I would. I think that there are good funding programs from the state for, for some good programs, but I think anything that's going to be ideologically based or be outside of what the scope of teaching our kids should be, should not be done, and I, and I would vote against those types of things. I read through everything to make sure that I was looking at it correctly, but I would, I'd be against anything that had strings attached to it.
Thank you. Teachers' unions in some districts have gone beyond collective bargaining and are now actively pressuring school boards to adopt and, and enforce ideological policies, often unrelated to academic instruction. In some cases, these unions have even threatened or initiated lawsuits against districts, including our own, that don't comply with their political agenda. Many in the community feel this undermines local control, academic focus, and taxpayer accountability. Number 11, as a board member, how would you respond to a teachers' union attempting to force ideological priorities onto your district, especially if they back it with threats of legal action?
Um, this is an interesting question. I've been on both sides of the unions. I've been a union member, a couple of unions, and I've also, as a board member for the Orange County Symphony, had to negotiate with unions on, on various issues, and then as a city councilman, I was, I was, worked with the police and fire unions and was endorsed by them. So I've worked with a lot of unions. I know that they can be very strong-willed, and I don't have a problem, you know. On the other hand, I would listen to their opinions respectfully, and I would tell them that as long as what they're doing is to pursue a better education for our kids, then, you know, I'm with you, but anything to do with ideology, you know, again, right or left, I'm saying no way.
Thank you. Number 12, do you believe unions have too much influence in public education today when it comes to subject matters not related to instruction?
I think at the school level, that all across the country and from the national all the way down, yes, and I certainly am very concerned with how they're pushing their ideology.
Thank you. Many feel that California School Board Association, C S B A, often act less like an independent advocate for local districts and more like a mouthpiece that blindly follows Sacramento mandates, pushing controversial policies without asking tough questions or pushing back. Number 13, as a board member, how would you ensure your district doesn't just follow the C S B A line blindly, but instead critically evaluate state policy to protect local control and community values?
Uh, I dealt with this issue as a councilman. The League of California Cities was pushing Northern California ideology as opposed to helping us out here in Southern California when I was on the Garden Grove City Council, and we eventually quit the League of California Cities and started our own Association of California Cities, which is still up and running. And so I've, you know, I recognize that Northern California's issues are different than some of what we have down here in Southern California, and I don't have a problem with pushing back against it whatsoever.
Thank you very much, and that concludes your questions. We appreciate your time and your answers, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Board, I'll give you a few minutes here. We're not allowed to leave and speak, so here, you can just look over your notes, look over everything before we continue, so just so everybody knows, I'm gonna give the board a couple of minutes before we proceed, just so they can digest all the answers and information they just received. just so they can digest all the answers and information they just received. I reconvene. Once again, thank you to all the candidates for participating in this important process. We appreciate your time, thoughtfulness, and commitment to serving the community. Board members, we will now move forward with the nominations for a candidate to fill the vacancy in trustee area number four. Once the nominations are closed, the board will vote in the order in which the candidates are nominated. The first nominee to receive a majority of vote will be appointed to the provisional seat. Okay. The floor is now open for nominations. I'm going to allow a little time. I have a nomination for Mr. Engen- Engeneri. Did I say it right?
Yes, you did.
Engeneri. I'm nominating him. Mr. Cruz, go ahead.
To vote.
To nominate right now. I'm giving time if you guys want to nominate somebody.
Um, Ms. Veloski.
I nominated Mr. Engeneri, that one, the last one that went. And you got Mrs. Veloski?
Yeah.
Okay, we have two nominations. Mr. Cervantes?
I nominate Mr. Smith.
Okay. Mr. Nog, do you have anything? You good? Hearing nothing further, no further nominations, I declare the nominations closed. Board, are there any comments or questions? This is your opportunity to share and talk about, just so you guys are clear with the process, they're allowed to talk about and comment, correct?
Not ask.
But they're not allowed to ask the candidates any clarifying questions or anything. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, I just want to make it really quick that, Ms. Veloski, you resonated me. And I felt that you were the most genuine, straightforward, and I really appreciate that. So, um, thank you for having that opportunity to go and ask me these questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Does anybody else want to make any comments? Go ahead. Mr. Cervantes?
Yes, regarding my nomination for Mr. Smith, a lot of things stood out, but a couple of things regarding just your understanding of the unions, because I come from that background, a union for many years when I was in the grocery business and then part of an association. But one of the things you mentioned that really stood out to me is just understanding the customer you serve and understanding, because in schools, the majority of the students are minors, and knowing that that parent is the ultimate authority regarding the well-being, understanding that that child is in a well-secured home, and understanding the importance of those rights. So that really stood out. The other answers were sound regarding Title IX and the other issues that came up. You were pretty clear on that, so I think you would be a great asset, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Any other comments? Mr. Nog, go ahead.
I'd like to thank all the applicants and especially those who have came here to answer the questions and show your interest in serving our students and serving our community. Just having that mindset is such a great asset for our community. People have different perspectives, but I believe that all of us has a gifts. And so, thank you for sharing your gifts by offering them to our students tonight. I believe, even though I wasn't able to nominate anybody, because I'm really conflicted. I actually have three equal people that I strongly believe could replace all three of us tonight. That's how you guys are qualified. So thank you for applying for tonight's position. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I just want to make a comment. I really liked, obviously, Mr. Smith answered the questions according to what I believe we're fighting for in our district. It's, I'm going to be transparent. It's a little nerve-wracking, you know, when we're trying to vote in somebody, especially to replace John, that is on board to academic excellence in here and to fighting the good fight against Sacramento. I did like Mr. Engeneri. I will learn that if he becomes a board member regardless. I do like, I like the way that he answered the questions very thorough and thoughtful. It appears that he's on board with keeping ideologies out of the classroom. That's really what this board's focus has been, so that the experts can do their job and do it well like they do. So I just really want to put that out there, that I think we have two potentially really good board members at bay. Any more questions, comments? Okay, hearing nothing further, we have to go in order. We're going to vote for Mr. Engeneri first. And the motion fails with a vote of one to three. Are we going to put it on the screen or no? We don't need to? I'll wait. It says four out of six, but we don't have six members voting, so maybe that's the, there you go. Okay. Okay. And now we have Mrs. Valen- Velas- Velaski? Valensky? Ms. Valensky? Now we're voting for her, and then it's Mr. Smith after. Okay, and the motion fails with a vote of one to three. And now, we have Mr. Smith. Waiting for one more vote? Are you guys thinking, or is maybe you thought that you put a vote in? Are you waiting, Mr.? Is it you, Mr. Cruz? I can't tell whose it is. Okay. It's green if you voted. If you didn't, it'll just be all white. And the motion passes for Mr. Sean Smith with a vote of four to zero. Mr. Sean Smith, please come forward to be administered the oath of office by Superintendent Dr. Anfield.
This mic on?
You're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sean Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith, and welcome to the Board of Education. Please take your seat at the dais and for the remainder of tonight's meeting. Okay, moving on. We're now on to item B, and I open the floor for nominations of Vice President. Mr. Nog?
Yeah, Mr. Cervantes.
Thank you. I also nominate Mr. Cervantes. Is there any more nominations besides Mr. Cervantes? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and put on the vote for Mr. Cervantes to be Vice President. And the motion passes for Mr. Cervantes as Vice President. Congratulations, Mr. Cervantes.
That was five oh?
That was a five zero. Wow, five zero. For some reason, it says out of six. I think it just wasn't. Okay. Okay. Hold on one second. You did not vote yet? Yes, of course. Hold on, redo it. It's, it's the vote in there, it needs, we need to fix that for future. Okay, we're waiting for one more. Mr. Nog? Press yes, all the way to the left. You just said yes, I'm not telling you. There you go. Okay, now the motion passes officially five zero. Congratulations, Mr. Cervantes, as our new Vice President. Okay. And finally, item C, I open the floor for nominations for volunteers for the liaison to the Chino Valley Independent Fire District. Nomination or a volunteer. If you want to volunteer, you guys just press the button. If you want to volunteer for any of the items. That's a liaison to Chino Valley Independent Fire District, and I see one, Mr. Cervantes. Are there any other? Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead. Hold on, mic's on.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mr. Smith. And, you know, a couple reasons. Number one, these empty slots were those positions that Mr. Monroe had, and I figured it'd be fitting for Mr. Smith to just kind of be seamless to flow in there and take that up.
Okay. Any other nominations? And can a board member decline? Any board member's allowed to decline, just so you know, I know you got thrown into the fire. Okay, and seeing no other further, congratulations, you are now our liaison to the Chino Valley Independent Fire District. They have an excellent board, so congratulations. Okay, now we're on to the representative of the Chino Hills Parks and Recreation Commission. Any nominees or volunteers? What is it, a once-a-month meeting? Nobody knows? I've never served on it. Do we want to leave that one open? Are they, are there meetings televised? Does anybody know? Because you can always watch it from there and just be involved. Go ahead, nominate somebody.
Again, Mr. Monroe had that spot, so I just nominate Mr. Smith. And, I mean, he could decline, but I figured, you know, why not?
You could decline, too. Yeah, there you go, hold on. There, your mic's on.
Okay. So, so Mr. Monroe had that, and it's a once-a-month thing?
I think so, but it might be televised. Do you know if it's televised? Okay.
This is Parks and Recreation?
Yeah. But if you know who their contact is and you can't make it, you can always do a simple phone call and just ask if there's anything you guys want to work on. It's pretty much if they need something which we haven't really seen a huge need, you would just be that point of contact for them.
Okay.
It's nothing strenuous, it's no, like, major commitment, other than being the person of contact for them.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Yep, no, I'll take it on.
Okay, and now you are now our new representative of Chino Hills Parks and Recreations and Commissions. Okay, now, we have alternate to Baldi View Regional Occupational Program, and I don't see anything on here yet, nobody jumped, so I'm going to nominate somebody. Mr. Cervantes. If anybody else has any other nominations, we'll take it. Seeing none further, Mr. Cervantes is our alternate to Baldi View Regional Occupational Program. And that's it. Congratulations to trustee Smith on your appointment. We look forward to working with you. With that, this special meeting is now adjourned at 7:14 PM.